Welcome to the regular Bellevue City Council meeting for May 9, 2022. First up, we have a request to excuse Councilmember Robertson. She is not able to attend today. Is there a motion to excuse her?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, let's start with roll call. City Clerk?
Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Barxdale?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Robertson? Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers on?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have three proclamations to read tonight. The first one is Older Americans Month proclamation. Deputy Mayor, would you read that, please?
Sir, my pleasure. Whereas President John F. Kennedy designated May as Senior Citizens Month to pay tribute to older people across the country, and in 1980 President Carter changed the name to Older Americans Month. And whereas the city of Bellevue includes a growing number of older Americans with a wealth of knowledge and experience, 14% of the city's residents are 65 years of age or older. And whereas people are living longer, over the last decade, the average life expectancy in King County rose to 81.7 years, exceeding both the national and state averages. And whereas in a recent survey for the Human Services Needs Update, nearly a third of residents noted lack of services for aging adults as a community issue. And whereas the city of Bellevue provides opportunities to meet the changing needs of a more active, diverse, older adult population. And whereas the Bellevue Network on Aging, a group of volunteers and staff, is dedicated to healthy aging in the community by promoting awareness of needs and resources that support older adults through life's transitions. And whereas the city of Bellevue engages older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encourages people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 as Older Americans Month, and urge residents to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community.
Thank you. The next one is Affordable Housing Week proclamation. Councilmember Stokes, could you read that, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Whereas all people should have access to safe, healthy, and affordable homes within communities that provide opportunity. And whereas studies have shown a direct correlation between rent increases and increases in homelessness, Bellevue rents increased 35% between April 2021 and April of this year. And whereas 232 Bellevue School District students were identified as homeless during the 2021-22 school year. And 30% of Bellevue households are severely cost burdened by rent, spending more than half their income on housing. And whereas the 2020 point in time count found 6,228 people in King County, including 446 in the East Side, sleeping outdoors without shelter. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has exacerbated many existing financial constraints for low and moderate income households. And whereas everyone benefits from affordable housing, including the people who reside in these properties, their neighbors, businesses, employers, and the community as a whole. And whereas the city of Bellevue, as part of a detailed affordable housing strategy adopted in 2017, has created or preserved about 1,500 affordable housing units or shelter beds, with 700 more expected to come online over the next couple of years. And whereas the city of Bellevue endorses the goals and objectives and purposes of Affordable Housing Week, and remains committed to ensuring that all people in our community live with dignity in safe, healthy, and affordable homes. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim this week of May 18 through 14, 2022, as Affordable Housing Week in Bellevue, and encourage residents to join in support. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the last one is National Police Week. Councilmember Lee, could you read that, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bellevue Police Department. And whereas there have been 60,105 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2020, resulting in approximately 18,568 injuries. And whereas, since the first recorded officer killed in the line of duty in 1791, more than 23,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. And whereas 619 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 34th Anniversary Candlelight Virgile on May 13, 2022, under National膜. And whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all fallen officers and their families. And U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. And whereas, law enforcement officers are a vital part of our communities, standing ready to deal with emergencies and risk their own safety and health in the execution of their duties to protect communities every day. And whereas law enforcement officers diligently perform essential work on the front lines alongside dedicated first responders and healthcare workers to continue to respond to the current public health emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the city of Bellevue, and city council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11 through 17, 2022, as National Police Week in Bellevue, to honor those law enforcement professionals who gave their lives, and to recognize and express appreciation for our local law enforcement officers working daily in public service to us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
We do, and we also have Major Popachak here to accept the police proclamation.
Oh, that's right. I forgot about that. Let's go up front and do a picture, and we'll hand it to him. Okay, now on to oral communications.
I think there are six speakers signed up this evening. And I will remind everyone who is going to speak, the oral communications is for a maximum of 30 minutes. And speakers will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, and a maximum of three speakers per side on any one topic. And with that, there are six pre-registered speakers this evening. And the first speaker is Brady Nordstrom, who is joining us virtually. Mr. Nordstrom, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Your time begins now.
Great. Well, good evening, Council. My name is Brady Nordstrom, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the East Side Housing Roundtable. We are a broad coalition that unites to support the creation of more affordable housing, of diverse types at all income levels, as a shared response to rapid growth. We strongly support the initiation of C1 Phase 2, which will build on the 2021 Luca, providing a buy right 50% density bonus for permanently affordable housing development on qualifying faith, nonprofit, or publicly owned properties. And part of the reason that we're supportive of this is we believe it's a necessary follow-up to ensure that the density bonuses on qualifying properties can align with House Bill 1377 and be, quote, "consistent with the local need for affordable housing." We thank staff for their diligent work on this strategy so far, and applaud their proposal to work closely with faith-based nonprofit and other stakeholders to ensure that the subsequent work can create an optimized tool that removes barriers to this urgently needed affordable housing, is feasible for use, and beneficial for the Bellevue community. So in conclusion, really thank you for the chance to speak, and thank you for this important work, which we believe can be just another way for faith-based organizations and nonprofits to contribute to their communities via affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Nordstrom. The next speaker is joining us here in person, and that's Marguerite Richard. Ms. Richard, Richard, excuse me. If you could step forward.
Good day, everyone. My name is Marguerite Richard. I come all the way from Seattle, Washington, because at this present time, our city is not open at full capacity to hear from their constituents. And yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. It's interesting that you mentioned law enforcement, because they have a stake in a lot of stuff that has happened to the indigenous black community, where I am very disenchanted. We have a new sheriff committed to King County at said time. I don't know her, never heard of her. But such is life. Here we are today. My situation, very critical, because I'm an indigenous black female. My rights, as far as you can talk about abortion, anything affecting women, it's always some kind of curse we have to fight through a whole lot. So the times I spoke to them in terms of Jenny Durkin and the texts, they mentioned Sawat and also Carmen Best, former chief of police for the Seattle area. It's just, it's just an ugly time right now. And he mentioned the fact that it was the ethics code that Ms. Durkin had violated. Now I'd do something like that, I'm going to jail or prison. Prison, yeah. I'm not going to be walking around free as if I didn't do anything wrong. Apparently it was a $200,000 settlement, but it's not settled. That's corruption at its best whenever you let somebody just slide, you know? And it's not over. Because we have to all be treated equal, not just somebody that has a title that just goes off into Never Never Land. Because they said, well, where is she right now? I don't know. Maybe she's thinking about what she did. But it's not fair. Like they said, Sawat and Best was involved in it. Best is going around giving entitlement to herself. She's on the front page of a magazine and everything else that she's doing. But Durkin remains quiet. And Sawat, I don't know. She was recalled. When she wasn't recalled, they tried, but it didn't work. But that's the power of the people. The power, the people should be able to determine what's next, not some corrupt body saying that we'll take something, rather than putting handcuffs and putting someone in prison and incarcerating them for the wrong that they have done. That's all I have to say.
The next speaker on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
It's okay. 25 seconds, no big deal. Yeah, so, Zhihai, my dirty, damn Nazi fascist mass bandito. My name, Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak about something that is very unique. You guys, from my understanding, best in the best government, what is I know, probably for the last couple hundred years. Nobody in this planet, in new history, I don't want to talk about Romano Empire. Yeah, put concentration camp, 300 million Americans for two years in concentration camp. Ever Hitler and Stalin done this so fast? So this exactly what as I told you, you are best of the best. Sorry, I know this. So about BS, what is I hear, 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 from beginning, about prices, homeless, and blah, blah, blah. This problem can be fixed very easy, and I spoke many times. I spoke in council chambers 3,000 times, probably 100 times or more I spoke about this problem. For example, oil company right now make $100 billion profit per month. This never happened when Trump was, yeah? Coaxity. Go to next step. About housing, I told you many times, very simple point. You can find this in my salute to the nation, in my website, alexforamerica.com. It's very simple. We have similar situation with Section 8. You can use same principle one way or another. Very simple. And from my understanding, by my plan, it's never will cost government a penny, because every apartment complex can deduct expenses from taxes. Because approximately in Seattle is 25,000 apartment, every, every year empty, every day, every year. Bellevue have two. I look right now for apartment, because I want move something different. Almost every complex have empty apartment. You understand about talking? It's a go-in, go-in, go-in. We're talking about $100,000. What is you can spend? Fix it homeless once and forever. Principle need change. But you don't do this, because by definition, I call you fascist with Nazi Gestapo banditos. That's exactly who you are. And about police, what is right now? For 35 years, I have experienced with many police. Sorry, I cannot find one honest police for 35 years. He prosecute me three times, and touch policeman 100 times. Is this a problem what is we have right now? You guys only care about your personal interest. I call you natural garbage, rye, rats principles. That's exactly who you are. You know what this means? Thank you.
The next speaker on the list is Hal Ferris.
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of the council. My name is Hal Ferris. My address is on record. I represent Imagine Housing and the East Side Affordable Housing Coalition. The East Side Affordable Housing Coalition is made up of 34 organizations that, not-for-profit and for-profit organizations that provide affordable housing and services related to those residents in the city of Bellevue and other eastside cities. We are the organizations that serve our community in that, of that group of people. I'm here to speak in favor of increasing the density of housing on property owned by those organizations, as well as other not-for-profit and publicly owned property. I was a member of the 2017 Technical Advisory Committee, that which identified this opportunity, provide a significant amount of affordable housing on property owned by those organizations. When staff took up this recommendation last year, our coalition reached out to offer our help to dig into the details and provide a recommendation that would, that could be implemented within the process of the city. As a result, the council approved Phase 1 Bonus Density last year. And now you're, before the council, the staff is presenting Phase 2, which is to increase the underlying density of the land owned by those organizations. Without increasing the underlying density, the existing density bonus would have very little impact. For example, most churches, the property is zoned R4 or less. So if you can only put four units per acre and you get a 50% bonus, you get to six units an acre. Well, our properties the churches have are around five acres, so we might get 30 units to an acre, or 30 units total, and we'd have to tear the church down to do that. And that just is not effective way. We can't effectively build, cost-effectively, or manage that small of a project, and we can't be competitive with public funding needed to support affordable housing with that small of a project. And many of the churches are surrounded by properties that are already zoned at R20 and R30. So we look to council to really be bold and creative in the solutions and the charge that you give to staff to take this next Phase 2. For example, we'd like to have you look at form-based code rather than units per acre as a way to increase the height and density for the development. That allows more studios and one bedrooms, as well as larger units to be built, rather than just large units that could try to maximize the units per acre. Second, we want to be creative and bold in looking at the land that will be considered for this additional increase in zoning. We want to skate to where the puck is going. We don't want to skate to where it is now. We need to plan for the future. So look to where our transit, where our density will be in the future, and look at those properties today as a way to achieve this opportunity for affordable housing. We appreciate the time and effort the staff has made in working with our coalition and the rest of the community. We look forward to continuing this relationship on C1 and other affordable housing initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. The next speaker on the list is Barbara Adwers.
May I stand, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, just stand closer to the mic, please.
Yeah. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and city council members, and all Washington citizens. I have an idea that may have already been thought of in a small way, on how to help solve the homeless problem. It's very simple. I go around all the time in my spare time and give money to the homeless.
May I ask that you give your name and address?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My name is Barbara Adwers, A-D-W-E-R-S. And I work for Amazon. So my idea is fairly simple. You do what I do, go, when you see somebody lying on the street, freezing cold, you go give them some money. You don't have to talk to them, but how about a little money, just to help them out a bit? So in the bigger concept, my idea is to get Amazon in Bellevue and Microsoft to help contribute. Since they don't pay a lot of taxes, they would contribute to a fund. We would have it on TV. We would make commercials that would make, be fun for children and adults. And they might want to go out and start helping the homeless. So I have a feeling this is really possible. What was I getting? I'm trying to remember. I always get ahead of myself. Okay. If you remember during COVID, there was a darling commercial, I love commercials that are cute. And there was a darling commercial made by, for Walgreens. And I don't know if you remember the young woman, there was a cute voice, a cute young woman's voice, and she would narrate. And it showed a young woman in a long coat and her pajamas, and she would be pushing her dog in a baby carriage. And they'd go, oh, you're getting back out now again. And it went on and on and on. Now that's what I'm interested in doing. That's about it.
Thank you so much.
I know I can get Amazon and Microsoft to help in this. I know it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Adwers. The final speaker on our pre-registered list is Chad Vaculon, and I believe Mr. Vaculon is joining us virtually. Mr. Vaculon, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Thank you. Your time begins now.
All right, thank you. And good evening, Mayor Robinson and members of the council. My name is Chad Vaculon, and I am the Advocacy and Mobilization Manager at the Housing Development Consortium. And I want to just thank you for proclaiming May 8 through 14 as Affordable Housing Week, and for your ongoing recognition of the current need for affordable homes in our community. You know, as your proclamation states, and many of our community members are living through too many students in our classrooms, don't have a stable place to call home, and too many families in our cities are struggling just to, just to stay housed. Our goals for Affordable Housing Week are not only to call attention to the level of need that exists, but also to highlight policy solutions and the important work that is currently being done in our communities to make a difference in affordable housing. So we hope that you will join us at some of our events we have planned during the week. And beyond that, we hope that you will continue to support affordable homes with all the tools that are really available to you. And I noticed on the agenda today that one of those tools that you'll be hearing tonight, which is the C1 Phase 2, and if I'm not mistaken, I believe Bellevue is one of only maybe like three cities in Washington State that's currently doing this work. So I want to thank you for taking, taking that on and pushing forward with that. Thank you again for taking the time to issue this proclamation and for your dedication on taking the housing crisis, taking it on like at the level of need that we really need to address it. So thanks once again, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Vaculon. That is the end of our pre-registered list, and we still do have a few minutes left for oral communications. At this point, I would ask if there is anyone joining us here in council chambers, or anyone virtually present who would like to make communication to the council, please raise your hand, or use the raise hand function if connected virtually. And Mayor, we do have one hand virtually, and that is Ms. Dean. Can you hear me?
Hi, Cam. Hi, Charmaine.
Hi, your time begins now.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Heidi Dean from Newport Hills here. Just was looking over the, the stuff on the agenda for tonight, and was looking at the scoping map for the affordable housing. And it reminded me, again, of the conversation that was had about that map years ago. And I'm really hoping, and I'm just going to be brief on this, that as we move forward in this, this conversation about building affordable housing on the religious-owned properties, nonprofits, public property, that we will be intentional about making sure that we don't focus all of, all of those units in one part of the city. You know, there can be unintended consequences in doing that. And I do have concern, looking at the map, that it does seem to be that a large portion of the eligible properties seem to be kind of in one portion of the city. And so just putting that out there, please be intentional about, about spreading the, the housing around. You know, everybody that requires affordable housing, they deserve to live in the different parts of the cities, not just in one area, which it seems to be Lake Hills and, and East Bellevue. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. And I do not see any additional hands, so that would close oral communications.
Okay, thank you. So we're now going to recess for 15 minutes for an executive session to discuss a matter pending litigation. So we will reconvene in about 15 minutes. Are you ready for us to resume? Okay, thank you. So next up, we have the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we have three study session items. Mr. City Manager, actually, we're going to bundle the last two.
That's correct.
Into ones. Would you like to introduce the first one?
Yes, sure. The first topic is initiating Phase 2.
The first topic is initiating Phase Two of the C1 strategy outlined in the city's Affordable Housing Strategic Plan. And just by way of background, in 2021, the council previously approved a special density bonus for property ownership that is faith-based, nonprofit or public. Today's presentation will review the work to date and propose regulatory changes that would further advance the council's strategy. Tonight, staff is seeking direction from the council to begin the next phase of the Affordable Housing Strategy. Joining us this evening is our Emile King, Assistant Director, Gwen Rousseau, Senior Planning, both of the Community Development Department, as well as Trizna Tanis, Consulting Attorney with Development Services. With that, I'm going to hand it off to Emile to begin the presentation.
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyaki, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Staff from Community Development and Development Services are bringing forward the proposed approach for the Phase Two of the C1 work. And this is part of the 2017 Affordable Housing Strategy and falls under the Strategy Area of Creating More Affordable Housing. You'll remember last December, council adopted the 50% bonus for the faith-based nonprofit and publicly owned sites. And tonight's work is to go back and look at a subset of the faith-based properties to increase development capacity on those sites for affordable housing. We'll be tying back the council discussion from last December with our proposed approach Doors are open back there. If we could go to the next slide, please.
It's not happening.
It's the big one.
You have to wave it around or something.
There we go. So tonight, staff are seeking direction to formally launch the Phase Two work of the C1 effort. We felt it was important to come back and outline the proposed approach for you so you were cognizant of what was happening as we worked with the community and the Planning Commission. The formal launch is going to include both a comprehensive plan amendment that's going to be part of the 2022 annual amendment process, as well as a land use code amendment that would occur concurrently. I want to go into a little bit of detail of the ongoing current work and future work just to set the context for this effort. C1 is part of a larger body of work that staff is doing and a very important part of it. The other elements that we are working on right now are the LUCA for Emergency and Supportive Housing is through the Planning Commission, and we'll be coming back to council later this month for council discussion. The work on updating Bellevue's Housing Needs Assessment will also be beginning soon, and we are working in collaboration with the State Department of Commerce and regional agencies on getting our housing needs assessment updated. We are also about halfway through our engagement work sessions regarding what's the next right work for affordable housing and housing capacity, and we're planning to report back to council in the June-July timeframe for the results of the next right work discussions. And finally, the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update that council launched earlier this year is garnering a lot of discussion about housing supply and affordable housing, as you might expect, and we'll be looking forward to the July update that we'll be giving to council on the Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. If you go to the next slide, please. So the agenda tonight is going to be a joint presentation by the three staff here at the table. We'll first be providing a project overview, and we'll go into some details of the proposed approach that we want council to give direction on. We'll also be reviewing the public engagement plan and some of the key milestones, and then we'll be reviewing the timeline and upcoming steps in the process. At the end of the presentation, we will have time to answer any questions that council might have or respond to any comments as well. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Trizna to continue on.
Great. Thank you, Emile. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor of Newhouse, council members. As said earlier, this is Phase Two of Action C1, so I want to give a brief recall of what that means. So this project is under the umbrella of the Affordable Housing Strategy and specifically Strategy C. Strategy C calls for the creation of more affordable housing, specifically those housing units that are affordable to people at lower and moderate income levels. And under Strategy C, this project is to advance Action C1. Action C1 calls for increasing development potential or capacity on land owned by public entities, faith-owned organizations, as well as nonprofit-owned properties. So next slide, please. So Phase One of Action C1 has been completed. You may recall in 2020, the first part of Phase One was a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which added three new policies, Housing 33, 34, and 35. This set up the policy basis to provide a bonus for affordable housing on suitable land owned by public agencies, faith-owned and nonprofit-owned. And at the end of last year, the city adopted the second part of Phase One, which is the Land Use Code Amendment, or LUCA, to implement those new policies and establish a buyright 50% bonus, as well as flexibility of certain standards and to allow some duplexes and triplexes in single-family areas. Next slide, please. And when this Phase One LUCA was adopted back in December, council also directed staff to look at and bring back how Phase Two of this action may occur. So this Phase Two is to create additional capacity for affordable housing on faith-owned properties in single-family land use districts, and specifically where such properties are in areas well-suited for multifamily development. So Phase Three, Phase Two, excuse me, includes three components. The first is a city-initiated Comprehensive Plan Amendment for map amendments for eligible properties to allow for that greater capacity. The second is a land use code amendment to establish requirements and standards that would apply to these higher-density housing developments and to ensure that these housing developments are in fact affordable housing. And the third would be a rezone of these properties consistent with the Comprehensive Plan map amendments. So next slide, please. With that, I'm now going to turn over the presentation to Gwen Rousseau.
Thank you, Trizna, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor of Newhouse, and members of council. While the 50% density bonus is significant for properties in multifamily land use districts due to the high base density and permitted uses, the 2021 LUCA was acknowledged as the first phase of implementing Action C1. Certain concerns were voiced by stakeholders that the 50% bonus may not be large enough to support affordable housing development in single-family land use districts. So per the direction council gave staff to bring back C1 Phase Two to increase density in underzoned areas along high-frequency transit, the scope of work, this scope of work would focus on faith-owned properties located in single-family land use districts on an arterial, within half a mile of high-frequency transit, and within 300 feet or about half a downtown superblock of a district where multifamily or commercial uses are allowed. This map shows the universe of all faith-owned properties located within single-family land use districts. A half-mile buffer around high-frequency transit is shown in gray, and a 300-foot buffer around land use districts that allow multifamily or commercial uses is in orange hatching. The black dots are those properties that meet all three criteria. The orange dots are those properties that fail to meet all three criteria. And the orange dots with black hatching are properties where high-frequency transit is planned with the opening of light rail. We propose including these properties in the analysis as they will meet all the criteria in the future. Also, as is known, the need for affordable housing, as you had with your proclamation tonight, is substantial, and therefore, our analysis will consider how many units could be developed on each site, given different land use district density and dimensional standards. We'll also look at what would encourage development of projects and make them more likely to occur. We'll also consider what is the surrounding neighborhood context that would support households moving in? What makes these great places for people to live? To learn more, we will be engaging faith organizations that own these properties, affordable housing developers and providers, neighborhood residents, community-based organizations that focus on housing, and households most impacted by housing cost burden. We'll be using a series of approaches, including an interactive webpage on engaging Bellevue, stakeholder interviews and conversations, a public open house, followed by Planning Commission study sessions and a public hearing. Our ultimate goal is to introduce the Land Use Code Amendment and rezone before council in April of 2023. So to get to that starting point, staff will begin by engaging public stakeholders to inform development of the proposal, to bring to Planning Commission in late June for review with a follow-up study session in late July. Planning Commission would then hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to council in September. The Comprehensive Plan Amendment would come before council for review in November, with adoption hopefully following in December as part of the city's 2022 annual Comprehensive Plan or Amendment Work Program. Planning Commission would then begin review of the LUCA starting in January so that introduction of the Land Use Code Amendment and rezone could come before council in April. So therefore, our next steps will include the analysis and public engagement, including stakeholder meetings and a public open house, followed by proposal development and Planning Commission review. And finally, again, the direction we seek from council tonight is to direct staff to initiate work on the Affordable Housing Strategy Action C1 Phase Two initiative, including a CPA as part of the 2022 Annual CPA Work Program and associated LUCA to further increase affordable housing potential on certain faith-owned properties in single-family land use districts.
That concludes the presentation, Mayor, and happy to answer any questions or hear any comments you might have.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm going to start us off here, and I thank you for the presentation. I'm really excited to have this before us tonight. We've been looking forward to talking about this option, this tool that we have. I was very intrigued with the public comment that we received to look at base form, base code versus, no, form versus code on increasing density. So if, when you come back to us, if you could comment on that, I'd appreciate it. I'm also, when I look at the map, I only see, I think, three future eligible parcels. Is that correct? So I would like to include those if my colleagues would like to as well. But the, and I'm all for doing this, so the answer is yes for me. But I wonder if we can include something and whether it's in this work that you do now, or if you come back and add this to the work plan. But I would like to look at some of these properties that do not, that are not eligible, and see if we can incentivize senior housing with duplexes and triplexes in those neighborhoods.
Okay. For that, that topic, I think it will be best to add that on to the July, late June-July discussion of the next right work, and we can have some thoughts on how to look at that senior housing bonus as something that the full council might want to give direction to launch.
Great. So write that down. All right, thank you. So Councilmember Stokes, you want to go ahead?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. It's been five years since we put this together, and what is exciting about this, that we're carrying it through, we talked about this not being a plan. We always do planning, and, you know, that's the name of department. I think it's actually a strategy department. And the whole idea was to put a strategy together to get this done and get it done quickly. And what we've done in the last five years has been very amazing, but this is even more so. And the plan simply was to develop and implement and deliver better and more affordable housing in Bellevue. It's simple. That's what we're going for. And I think we're doing it in a really exciting way. Phase Two really just does that. And the work and strategy the staff has developed, I think, is, and this council work and staff, the City Manager's Office, the community have all come together and worked on this. So we're talking about implementing something now that I think this city, this community, is wholeheartedly behind this. And it's going to take a lot of work to get it done, but I'm really excited about having this put before us. I agree that, you know, I think that's a good idea the mayor has to look at these other places and continue to find as many opportunities as we have. And the other thing that, what I feel like in terms of with my time on the council, the way this has been brought forward, I think is a great step forward. I mean, it's always good to be looking at how to do things different and better. And I think bringing things forward in a reasonable time period, giving yourself a timeline that is going to take a lot of work is the thing that's going to get us to the goal line on this. So I personally really appreciate what we're doing here now. And I appreciate it as a council member and a member of this city. So I'm ready to go forward with it, and let's get it done, and I like your timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Breckstall.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll keep it short. To support initiating this work, I would just say that when I was liaison to the Planning Commission, I know there was a lot of discussion about how we could get more, make it more feasible to develop more units in addition to the density bonus. So looking forward to the work coming back and moving this forward.
Happy to be new, Mayor.
Well, first of all, Emile, Gwen, and Trizna, thank you for the presentation this evening. Like my colleagues, yeah, look forward to initiating this in favor of moving forward. A few things just to keep in mind and would like to be part of this process, too. So I really like the mayor's idea about incentivizing and looking at other, because it merges into, which we had a comment about tonight from Ms. Dean, but something that I hear a lot living in the Lake Hills neighborhood is the imbalance of where these might go. And the majority, looking at the map right now, Lake Hills, crossroads, East Bellevue. So if we could look at a better mix or balance amongst the city and provide other incentives in order to do that, I think that is, that's important work to take a look at. And then would like to, as we move forward, have a better understanding of stakeholders, who those stakeholders are. Sometimes we just use it as a catch-all, but I think it's always good for us and for the community in general to understand who the stakeholders are. And then the outreach. I know we're just initiating this work, but going forward, I'll be really looking for more expansive outreach than just a webpage, because too often residents don't know it's there unless they just, you know, stumble upon it. So for me, I'd like to see a little bit more robust so that we can have a really, you know, some really great public outreach and input on this process as we continue to move forward. So that's really important to me. But yeah, this is exciting work, and I love the Gretzky analogy to kind of kick this off, too, about where the puck's going. So this is all very good stuff, and yeah, I'm certainly in favor of it, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers on?
Yes, I too appreciate getting going on this, so thank you very much for creating the map. I especially like the map that has the actual names of the churches on it. It's very helpful to see what it looks like throughout the city. I would say that, I think, I agree with my colleagues, we need to move with urgency to get more units built throughout the city. So that is one of the things that we committed to as our priorities, is that we would have a mix of housing types throughout the city. And I would say that that is both rental units as well as homeownership. You know, I was out in the rain helping the Habitat for Humanity Women Build on Saturday, and one of the units is going to be owned by a woman with two kids, living currently in an arch housing, paying more than 50% in rent. So super excited for her that she's going to be able to own a home. I wish it was in Bellevue and not in Renton, because I think that, you know, she has community here. So as we look at this, I think it's important to look at how we make sure that we create the right environment for both rentals and homeownership. I appreciate the fact that we're moving into this. I think we're calling it Superbonus and how we actually make that work. The criteria, I understand all of the pieces. I guess my question, though, is the one that talks about near multifamily housing, land use district, within 300 feet. So I'd like to understand why only 300 feet? Why not 500 feet? Why not 1,000 feet? Because if my math is right, a mile is 50 to 80 feet, and so 300 is almost nothing. That's a block, right? So, and I'm especially looking at it, because, you know, when I look at some of these faith properties... properties, it looks like it's, the dot is right on the cusp of the shaded areas. So I would like to understand if we were to go to, you know, 600 feet or 1,000 feet, how many of these faith-owned properties would then become eligible for the same super-density bonus? The same thing with the one that says it has to be on an arterial. Is there a reason why it has to be on an arterial? So if it's a block away from that, does it make them ineligible? And I'd really just like to understand why that is, because it's not really very clear to me, especially if we're trying to build more units with urgency. And then I agree with the mayor about looking at the future transit routes, and so incorporating the, I guess, the dashed round dots into the eligible pieces. I like the form-based codes, because to me, it seems like a lot of our community worries about the look and the architectural feel and how it fits in the community. So if we were able to create form-based codes where it isn't just a mathematical exercise of, of units per acre, that actually goes to the essence of what we're trying to do versus math. And then, let's see, I think, oh, on the timing. So last week, when we talked about the Wilburton, we talked about moving with urgency. So I get, I would ask the same question here, that I see that we already have an overlap between the CPA and the LUCA. Is there anything else that we could do to speed this up so that the faith-owned properties can move even faster with this housing? So as you look at the timeline, I would just ask whether there's any more time that can be compressed or overlap between those two phases to get things moving? And then lastly, on the next right work, I know we're focused on the faith-owned properties right now, but certainly when we were back on the BDA tour, learning about Arlington and Alexandria, we saw some, some city-owned properties where there was some mixed use that had city functions along with housing. So I know it's not this particular one, but when we move to that next right work, I'd like us to consider how we might take our own city functions and incorporate housing into that as we reimagine what the buildings might be or new buildings we're going to build. So thank you.
Okay. I can respond to a few of those comments if you'd like, Mayor.
Yes, please.
Yeah. So for the, the next right work, we are taking notes on ideas that are coming up, and we'll be able to present back on that in late June or July. On the timing, we are, for, for all of these affordable housing and major initiatives, we are presenting you, I think, well-fought, aggressive schedules. So clearly, we're committing to something. We will, we will look for efficiencies as well, but appreciate expressing the sense of urgency. We feel it, too, but we, we tried to present a, a pretty aggressive schedule in that, but clearly we'll look for any efficiencies that might come up. I'll chime in a little bit on the 300 feet, and then I'm going to let Trisna and Gwen talk a little bit about it as well. We, we were attempting to follow the direction from council back in December about looking at the proximity to transit, being in an arterial, being nearby other higher-density uses. The 300 feet, we've, we felt was the distance that kind of made sense for this work. You know, 300 feet is where you can visually see other development nearby that feels like it's of the same density and not 1,000 feet or a half mile away or anything like that. So that was our, our take on what a good proximity felt like, the 300 feet. And I can, I know Gwen did a lot of mapping of-
Can I just ask, but if we go with form-based, then there is a way to imagine building housing that still fits the, the look and feel of the, of the single-family neighborhood? So I'm just asking that question, because if we do go with more of that form-based view, it seems to me that the 300 feet could be expanded.
Yeah. What we were, this effort really is looking at single-family zone properties and contemplating multifamily zoning for those properties. So the, the form-based, if I can elaborate a bit more on that, there's, you can do dwelling units per acre, which is pretty common in R5 zoning or 10, R10 zoning. The form-based essentially takes the box and lets you put potentially more units in there. So you aren't as concerned about the units per acre. You're more about fitting in the smaller units, as Mr. Ferris had described. So that's the, the essence of the form-based. You're still allowing what's going to look a bit like a multifamily development there to get the, the-
But are there architectural, I guess, looks and feel that makes it seem like it's more single-family-like that then would allow us to expand on the 300 feet, is I guess my question?
Yeah. I think, you know, the densities are going to be of a multifamily take. We can look at if there are ideas on design that's going to make it feel more compatible with the, the surrounding single-family, but our approach was, that's why that 300 was so important, because there is adjacent multifamily development or commercial development nearby these sites.
So Emile, when you said in June, when we, we're going to look at the, what we consider non-eligible properties, maybe we can have that conversation that-
Okay.
Maybe draw another map that shows what it would look like at 500 or 1,000 feet.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the good work. As you know, that, you know, everybody in the city, the council supports more density. We know how challenging housing is. Actually, it's always been for Bellevue. You know, Hal, Hal Ferris, he's been here for a long time, so am I. And Bellevue is such a great place where everybody wants to come to live. So we started with Arch. You know, Arch is working very hard on it, and hell knows all that stuff. You know, county, state, community, nonprofits, we all work hard on it. And of course, things have really changed a lot, accelerated. We have a lot more development, a lot more people, same space. So the challenge is what we are working on now, you know? So high density, no question about it. You look at where we can put them, no question about it. And I also recognize urgency, because it's happening, right? 10 years ago, Boston has urgency, you know, now, but 30 years ago, it's not as urgent as 20 years ago. So it's a challenge we're facing. I also realize urgency is here, so we need to be aggressive, like you said. But I just want to caution everybody, you know, we want to do it right, okay? Aggressive's good. Time schedule's good. Being, you know, we have a sense of urgency is good, but make sure we do it right. Do it right for the neighborhood. Do it right for the reasons that Bellevue is attractive, right? We got to make sure it happens. And so in a way, you know, we're talking about the details that's being kind of discussed a little bit. So I support this concept, no question about it. We need to get more density, look for more places, do whatever we can do. However, we have to do it right. So it's the detail, and a lot of things come out in the detailed discussion. 3 feet, 300 feet, 500 feet, 1,000 feet, okay? But it's got to be looked at, it's got to be right. So I, I believe that, you know, using the church properties, obviously, you know, I think that's something we agree to. And it's, especially when you put all the other conditions, you know, which maybe I will ask you. I have a little, one question I wasn't clear about is, I see what you have on the chart. I think it's all based on the condition you have presently. My concern is what happens in the future? You know, these are existing church properties. What if somebody go in there, buy a piece of property that's not church-related, and they turn into a faith-based facility? Then they can say, well, it's now a faith facility, we can actually make it into multifamily, you know, residence or whatever. And I think that depends on the situation again. So, but I'm not sure what condition you may have, what kind of constraint you have, what kind of safeguard you have to make sure, you know, we don't have abuse like this. We don't have unintended consequences like this. So I agree with the deputy mayor. We need to really have outreach. We need to have real community engagement. So we all know what we're expecting. We will know what we may not be ready for, right? So that we don't unintentionally, you know, sort of a, I would not use the word corrupt, but unintentionally make people suspect, gee, you guys are opening a door for things that, you know, we may unintentionally got stuck in. So I think I, you, I, I mentioned this before, if you recall, you know, you say, no problem, we can actually safeguard this. So maybe you can say a couple of words on that to see how we can prevent, you know, unintentional, unsuspected situation that we don't want to. At least we're not ready to, okay? So maybe you can say-
Maybe you can address the likelihood of that happening.
Yeah. We, this came up in the C1 Phase 1, so I'll let Trisna start out and then add on as needed about the approach, because it, it's a good question, and we did kind of address it previous, but happy to, to give another answer to it.
Sure. Thanks, Emile. So with this Phase 1, C1, the LUCA that we had done for it, there is a requirement for an affordable housing covenant that is placed on the development and the property. It runs with the land. So once that, even though it may start as eligible property, meaning that it's owned by a faith organization, it is developed with housing. That housing, those housing units must be affordable for the life of that development. So even if that property owner no longer owns that property and that development, the units themselves still has to remain, they have to remain affordable, again, for the life of the development, based on the affordable housing covenant. So that's the safeguard, Councilmember Lee, that is in place for, as part of the LUCA for Phase 1. We anticipate doing the same here. So when you get additional capacity, because you're an eligible property, and you develop that property with additional density, those units will be affordable for the life of that project.
Okay. So my concern, sorry, I mean, continue. My concern is we are turning some of this into multifamily, especially in the future, we may modify, even extend, you know, the, the area where it could happen, because, you know, it meets, we feel that it's compatible, supportive, and it's important to do that. And people say, hey, we're happy for it. But I, I'm just asking the question same again. If you're turning a church property into multifamily and then we can extend it, then it's, oh, another piece of property that can be further away, maybe closer to a single-family, or maybe right within a single-family, and you have a, have a, more of a severe impact, then they can turn it into multifamily home. Then it could just extend unintentionally. That's what I'm concerned about. So I want to know if we will be conscientious about it, making sure that we know where the community accept, what the situation will be, and how can we prevent unintended development that would be subjected to abuse or whatever, right? Maybe I used the word too, too strongly, but that, that's it. So is there something you can state that it's up to the city, up to the code? There needs to be some kind of action to make that happen? Or maybe we have the opportunity to look at it when we want to extend the limit of-
Let's get an answer.
Yeah. Let's, the staff proposal is to proceed with the properties on the map. We have a criteria that we, we set forth. As Trisna mentioned, any properties that do want to take advantage of more housing capacity, it is 100% affordable housing project for the life of the project. We are just analyzing the properties with the direction from council. Hypothetically, if someone did buy a single-family property, established a faith-based organization, I guess hypothetically, they could do it. I think the likelihood, I think, is very low, and clearly, staff and the, and the council would be aware of that occurring in the future. So I don't want to say it's a 0% chance, but it's, I think it's a pretty small chance, and we would maybe cross that bridge when we get there, would be my, my take on things.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you for that answer. So we have a motion, I think, that you're going to make that I, I hope will include the eligible parcels and the future eligible parcels. So is there a motion, Deputy Mayor?
Senator News, Mayor, I move to direct staff to initiate work on the Affordable Housing Strategy Action C1 Phase 2 initiative, including a comprehensive plan amendment as part of the 2022 annual CPA work program and associated land use code amendment to further increase affordable housing potential on certain faith-owned properties in single-family land use districts and to include future eligible properties.
Second.
All those in favor? Yes.
Did I need, do we need to include amendments so that we also are looking at the radius that goes up to about-
I think that we decided that we're going to look at these dots on the map that are the eligible parcels and the future eligible parcels, and then in June, we will look at the other dots that have not been included and see what we can do with those.
Okay. June being when the affordable housing update comes back? I'm just trying to understand the process.
Well, I, you and I-
As part of the, as part of the next right work, we're happy to do the staff analysis on what different radiuses would be and present that as part of a, it's going to be a large package of ideas that we bring back in, in late June, July.
I mean, there's, there's options. You can look at extending the radius to make it a eligible parcel, or you can look at what I'm asking to do, which is to do a different treatment for those ones, but still affordable housing. So I think that's going to be addressed in June, so it does not need to be part of the amendment.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we are going to combine our Arts and Culture Program biannual update and the East Side Arts Partnership Support Grant and Guidelines, right, Mr. Miyake?
That's right, Mayor. And the, the first one, in terms of the biannual update, is an informational update to the council. We do this twice a year. And as you mentioned, the second topic we're combining that with is an overview of recommendations regarding guidelines for allocating grants, funding. And for the second topic, the staff is seeking council approval of the guidelines this evening. So joining us this evening is Jesse Canado, our Chief Economic Development Officer, and to his right is Lori Hoffman, our Arts Community Manager, both from the Community Development Department. With that, I'm going to pass it off to the team. Begin presentation.
Thank you, City Manager Miyake, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. We're looking forward to tonight's presentation on the arts and creative economy portion of economic development's work. As you know, that is part of our comprehensive holistic approach to economic development and community development here in Bellevue. We're looking forward to sharing tonight how, across both parts of the presentation, we are working to improve and elevate Bellevue's regional leadership on arts and culture-related activities. So as we've done on the more traditional parts of economic development over the last six years, staff has been working very hard to become a, a thought leader and a regional convener on issues related to arts and the regional economy, and will also be highlighting how we are working to improve access to arts and cultural experiences across the city. And with that, I will hand it over to Lori.
All right. Did I get this figured out here? I don't know. There you go. Hello, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you so much for having us tonight. Tonight's presentation, information only, no direction as requested of council. I'll be fairly brief with a quick update on some in-progress public art projects, and then our main subject of study will be our upcoming participation in Americans for the Arts National Economic Study. As a reminder, the scope of the arts program here at Bellevue includes the items you see on the slide in front of you. Up next tonight, you will receive an update on the arts grants, and now you'll hear updates on public art and cultural planning. All the work we do in arts, in the arts program is currently being viewed and reviewed with pandemic recovery and diversity, equity, and inclusion issues at the forefront of our work. So first off tonight, I'll give an update on some public art projects. Starting, I'm going to address these kind of starting at the bottom left, and working my way around clockwise. In the next few weeks, we'll be acquiring 29 works from 24 artists for our Portable Works collection. New works will be displayed on the mezzanine here in City Hall, and the works that are currently at the mezzanine will be distributed to public facilities and publicly accessible areas across the city. The work you see in this slide here is called Uptown by Morgan Madison. It is one of several of our first class works that we're going to be acquiring in 2022. In the image above that, you can see in downtown park, our artist Mark Fornes of The Very Many is planning installation of our largest artwork in September after some delays in fabrication. Installation of the sculpture will begin after the Rock and Roll Marathon to ensure that we don't impact our newest event. On the top right, you're going to see the work here is called Sound Bath by artist Po Shu Wang. This work is planned at 130th and Spring Boulevard in our Bell Red Arts District. Mr. Wang is getting ready to fabricate and install this new work once contracting is complete. The council will see the fabrication and installation contract for this work in your consent calendar in June. And then finally, in the coming months, art staff will work with community members to set a course for a new artwork in Crossroads Park. This project was originated as part of our NEP, or Neighborhood Empowerment Program, and we're excited to be diving in with community members for a conversation about possible directions, one of which could be box wraps that you see in front of you. We could look at thermo- at thermoplast, we could look at sculpture, lots of areas where our community gets to set direction. Up next, we'll look at our Cultural and Economic Impact Study that we're leading for both Bellevue and the East Side region. Arts and Economic Prosperity is a national study organized by Americans for the Arts. It's conducted approximately every five years, with the last iteration being conducted in 2015. Arts and Economic Prosperity 6, launching in 2022, was originally slated for 2020, but was postponed due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the effects of which were particularly felt in arts, culture, and entertainment industries. The last time this study was conducted, 2015, it was Americans for the Arts' fifth study of the nonprofit arts and culture industry's impact on the economy. It documents the economic contributions of the arts in 341 communities across America, representing all 50 states and the District of Columbia. Nationally, the nonprofit arts and culture industry generates $166 billion of economic impact during 2015. This activity supported 4.6 million jobs and generated $27.5 billion in revenue to local, state, and federal governments, a yield well beyond the collective $5 billion in arts allocations. I want to pause there for just a second. That means that for every $1, government invests in arts and culture. Arts and culture returns $5 in tax revenues. Another important and often cited statistic from the study is how much an arts and culture attendee or audience member spends in the community beyond the price of their ticket. This number is used by nonprofits across the country when demonstrating their economic impact. It is cited countless times in grant applications, letters to donors, and reports to government officials. Since it's uniformly acquired, it's a commonly-used benchmark among, or benchmark number among cities who participate to compare the health of their arts and culture economy. With arts and culture organizations in cities that don't participate, left to use the national number. Nationally, beyond the price of admission, an arts and culture attendee spends an additional $33 in the community. That was in 2015. And if you adjust that for basic inflation, that number is $40.71 and $20.22. But there's some problems with national data. First off, it's a simple average across all 50 states, which have greatly differing costs of living. Compounding that problem is heavy participation of Midwestern states and historically very low participation from communities in Washington State. In fact, in the most recent study, the only municipality in Washington that participated was the city of Tacoma. That leaves us without Bellevue-specific data or even East Side regional data that we can then compare across the nation and with benchmark cities. Why is there typically low participation? There are many reasons, but some of the big ones include that there's simply less available funding. Washington State ranks 39th in the nation, behind states like Mississippi, Louisiana, Tennessee, in per capita government arts allocations, which leaves less money available for studies when other concerns like artwork maintenance press on arts budgets. Another reason is much more positive. Regional art nonprofits, or nonprofit organizations like Arts Fund and Artist Trust do look at some economic impacts. A great example of that is Arts Fund's recent COVID-19 impact report. These studies, however, look internally at Washington State and are not comparable to benchmark cities across the nation. So let's look back at that $33 of economic impact across the nation in 2015. We don't currently have strong data for the economic impact of the arts in Bellevue, but what would that number look like in Bellevue specifically in 2022? What would it look like for the East Side as a region? We've got a unique and different set of realities on the ground in, than, here in Bellevue than, say, in Lincoln, Nebraska, a 2015 study partner, a study partner compared to whom we have 118% higher cost of living. You will simply spend more to go out to dinner here, you will pay more for the babysitter, and these numbers will probably look very different for Bellevue in the East Side region. So let's find that answer. In 2022 and 2023, the city of Bellevue will participate in this national study, but we won't go it alone. Bellevue is leading a regional study in partnership with the economic development departments of the cities of Brenton, Redmond, and Essequo. These partnerships will not only give us a more holistic view of our economic impacts, but lowers the cost for all study participants. Lowering that cost even further, Bellevue secured grant funding for ourselves and our partners, which brought the total study expenses down from $13,500 to $2,550. On the national level, Bellevue has also shown leadership on our core values of inclusion. Originally, the study survey implement was only going to be available in English and Spanish, but through Bellevue's advocacy, the study will now be available nationwide to people who speak Mandarin, Cantonese, Korean, Punjabi, Russian, Vietnamese, and Hindi. Which brings us back here. Investing in the arts is investing in our economy, but we don't know where to start if we don't know where we are. So let's start. Data collection will launch this summer. Art staff is fairly limited in our capacity, so we're proud to be in, working in partnership with the Seattle University Art Leadership Program. Graduate students enrolled in their practicum course will work with city and staff on the nonprofit, and the nonprofit arts and culture community, to collect data onsite at events. Data collection will span approximately one year, and the Americans for the Arts compiling, Americans for the Arts will compile the results in summer of 2023. The final delivering report will be in the fall of 2023, at which point, results will be presented to council. Thank you so much. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any comments or questions?
Yes, I just have one. Looking forward to this. I know we're saying art and culture, but I am excited for the contribution to overall nightlife in Bellevue. And so, one question, and I don't have any particular bias, I guess, but are we paying our interns?
These are students who will be actually participating for college credit. So they will be enrolled in their classes, and I believe that the current guidance from HR is that we do not pay them when they are enrolled and getting college credit. So it's part of their course of study.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, go ahead, Deputy.
Oh, thank you. No, I just want to first thank you for the presentation. Lori, as you may have heard, even staff was moved by your presentation, doing some music appreciation during your, but, no, this is great. I mean, we always pride ourselves on being data-driven, and that even includes in the arts. And so, you know, I think, yes, let's get started. Let's get going today to know where we are and where we need to go. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Councilmembers, aye.
Yeah, I'm excited about us participating in the Economic Impact Study. I think it'll be really important work, and being able to do the outreach in multiple languages, I think, is also really, really important. So I appreciate that. Will we then be, I guess, what am I trying to say? So we're not going to have the results until the end of 2023. So in the meantime, we've got our next presentation on the grants that are going to be coming, and yet, we know how many of these organizations are struggling with capacity building as they've come out of COVID. So in the next presentation, will we hear more about just how we make sure that we're infusing right capital or capacity building in those organizations as they are surviving while we're going through the study?
We'll hear a bit about that tonight still, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, yeah. I think it's now recognized that arts and culture is a very important part of economic development, because it provides a place that make the multicultural community feel belonging, welcoming, and they also can share, you know, their culture together. At the same time, they can also enjoy, appreciate, you know, their own culture that they bring here. And I think this basically goes to business as well. Business, multicultural, international, global. So they have employees from all over the world. So it's very important that, you know, this is a very important piece of economic development. I'm glad you recognize that. But also, you know, this is recognized by the region as well. You know, the mayor and I will participate in the regional economic development in organizations. This Greater Seattle Partnership, and I, active in the PSRC EDD Board, and we have Arts Fund, you know, very strongly participating in it, and they're doing good work. They're doing a lot of data analysis, Deputy Mayor. You know, and unfortunately, you're absolutely right. You know, most of the data in the past don't really cover too much of what we've got. We are partly to blame, because we're so comfortable. We, you know, we feel that we are, we can be independent. But now, I think, we recognize the region is really more, has to be a region. So I think it's important for us, and I'm trying to do whatever I can, say, hey, you've got to include Bellevue data, East Side data, the regional data. So we don't need to duplicate. We can, you know, we pay, we pay them dues to belong to the organizations. So I think it's justifiable. I think they recognize that. And this is important, not just from the fact of arts and culture. It's bringing people together. It's basically bringing people to understand and know each other through the thing that they feel comfortable with, is through what they are proud of, their art. And that brings the culture together. So, you know, the city is working on a cross-culture center, you know, project. And I think they're really bringing all this together. And we talk about arts and culture. There's one thing that we have not mentioned exactly, but I think our whole cross-culture center project will, is we need space, okay? We don't-
Councilmember Lee.
I know, five culture talking-
Part of the conversation.
Meeting on the street corner, no.
Councilmember Lee, can I ask you to hold those comments? That's not really pertinent to what we're talking about right now.
Arts and culture.
We're going to be moving on to this, to these grant guidelines now. So-
Well, let me make one more point, okay? I know that there's a capacity building. Somebody mentioned it. It's also important. You recognize that. You say, languages are spoken now, you know, more than just what it is. Hopefully, we can do more, okay? I know an organization, they don't have space here, so they're trying to increase its capacity to do internet, you know, thing. But they have to have a space they do, but they have to pay to expand the internet service, tend to accommodate the students that want to, you know, be involved in the arts and culture center. And we need to pay more attention to that as well. That's the small pieces, small, you know, art and culture partners that we need to figure out how we can help them.
So what I hear Councilmember Lee asking is that, you know, can we include some of maybe our younger members of the community when we do surveys and when we evaluate the interest and the involvement in the arts and culture?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you very much. So we're going to move on to the next part of this. Would you, what, did you want to say something?
It's okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the, to the grants, the EAP grant and project grant guidelines.
Sorry, technical difficulties here. Tonight's staff is seeking council approval for updates to the arts grants guidelines. This work will better support arts and culture nonprofits and creatives who are making Bellevue a more vibrant community, consistent with the Economic Development Plan and Bellevue City Council 2123 vision and priorities. Our agenda tonight will include a brief review of the arts grants background, and we'll look at the staff, sorry. Our agenda tonight will be a quick review of the arts grants background, we'll review the guiding principles that council set in March, and we'll look at our process and timeline before looking at our updates and next steps. The city has provided arts grants and culture grants since the early 2000s, with the last major changes made in 2018. Currently, the grants fund arts and culture organizations through three annual granting programs: the East Side Arts Partnership, Special Projects, and Power Up programs. The arts grants use a shared leadership model, where council sets the overall guidelines and approves annual rewards. The Arts Commission evaluates applications and makes funding recommendations to council, and city staff manage day-to-day administration of the program. This slide gives a quick review of the grants awarded in 2022. We funded 42 organizations and individuals and awarded 45 grants in total through our three granting programs. These grants have an important impact on communities' access to creative outlets, arts education, and the attraction of regional visitors to Bellevue. They serve an estimated 1.1 million people, both residents and visitors, through programs, performances, cultural events, and arts education. In March, the council approved the guiding principles you see on the slide in front of you. They include making sure that our grants program reflects the current needs of our arts and culture community, ensuring equitable access by simplifying the application process, centering underserved communities in our funding priorities, activating the Bell Red Arts District through arts grants initiatives, or incentives, and exploring multi-year support to streamline and reduce work. For review, the timeline for this work has been relatively tight as we thread the needle between annual application windows. Information and data gathering began in earnest in January and February of this year, and can continue strongly into March. Arts Commission was briefed in March 8, and the council launched work on March 28. Staff returned to the Arts Commission on April 20 for a recommendation, and now I'm honored to be here tonight with the final recommendation. If guidelines are approved tonight, staff will begin work to prepare our cultural community for any changes by hosting information sessions in July, ahead of the application process opening in August. The new grant guidelines are available in your packet and include some of the following larger changes. One of the bigger changes is a restructuring of the grant buckets. Instead of three grants, where we had our East Side Art Partnership, our Power Up, and our Special Projects, we're combining those three into two grant buckets. We are now thinking of them as our EAP support grants, which are kind of for organizations, they're more operational, and then our project grants, which are for individual one-time projects. Each of these two grant buckets has an additional optional add-on bonus grant. So for our operational grants, which are the vast majority of our grants, we have our Power Up for Equal Access, which addresses capacity building for organizations that serve historically underserved communities. And then in our project grants, we have our Bell Red bonus, which gives a small additional amount of money for events and organizations starting new activities in our Bell Red Arts District. Looking more closely at our EAP support grants, these grants are available to 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations who have been in operation for at least two years. We have removed the delineation between large and small organizations, and the corresponding funding gaps, caps. Now organizations will be evaluated on the impact of their program solely. We've also removed the two-step application process, which required organizations to complete a formal letter of interest that then staff would have to review before being allowed into the application program. Now organizations will simply certify their eligibility on a checklist, and if eligible, will automatically be moved into the application. The add-on grant opportunity for EAP support is a modified Power Up grant called Power Up for Equal Access. It is a $5,000 award meant to fill arts and cultural gaps for underserved communities. Finally, this grant will move to a two-year funding cycle, mirroring our own budget process and in line with comparative programs around our region. Proposed changes for our project grants include a simplified name, the same streamlining of the eligibility checklist and application that the EAP support grants have, and the add-on grant for project grants is a Bell Red bonus, which will incentivize new projects to start in the Bell Red neighborhood, activating the arts district. Finally, based on strong feedback from our arts and culture providers, these grants will now have preset funding levels, removing some of the ambiguity of award amounts. The funding levels you see in the guidelines are subject to change yearly based on the program funding levels that we are awarded. If the final guidelines are approved tonight, staff will move forward with guideline translation and prepare for a variety of information sessions and outreach to arts and culture community. We will do this to make sure that our meeting our goals to provide equitable, inclusive, and accessible grant process, and our application window will open in early August. Stay open through September. We will be back to council in November or December of this year with the Arts Commission's recommendations for the 2023 grant award recipients. Looking forward for, looking tonight for approval for the arts grants guidelines as recommended by the Arts Commission. Thank you so much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Why don't we start with Councilmember Stokes?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Really appreciate the work that Ms. Hoffman and Jesse Canado have been doing to, really took a revamp with this. I've been liaison for Arts Commission for some time, has seen a tremendous growth. We've always had a good program and all, but what we're talking about here tonight, why did that go off? The, is a major upgrade and focus of the program, and that's, that's been needed for some time. And it's also an expansion of the growth of the Arts Commission and our arts program from a fairly narrow kind of every year or so, or, you know, kind of, to really embracing arts as, and culture as a vital thing, going on all the time, and doing it in a very, I think, approachable and community-oriented way. So I- So I, I'm very pleased to see this and think this is going to make a big, big difference. This is a big change. But, um, and have to give kudos to the Arts Commission, uh, over the last several years working on this and staff, uh, and the community. And a lot of what, uh, Laura is talking about and what we, we worked on is, are things that come from the community saying, you know, this process isn't working like it should. We need to do better. We can get this or that, you know? And it's been a very iterative piece that's, that's very important. So again, um, the community, staff, uh, council, all coming together to really increase the program has just been amazing. So I'm, I'm very pleased to see this tonight. It's a really solid work. You know, culture and arts and things, culture is just human beings doing expression things in, in art. And everybody has a culture. And it's, uh, getting the multicultural aspects in all kinds of ways has been really good. We've done that for a long time, but, and I think we're at the point where we're expanding, and getting the Bell, Bellred Arts piece going of other places. We're going to have venues. We're going to have places for people to, to go and enjoy this all over the city. I think we're going to increase that greatly in all kinds of ways. Uh, it can be a big place here, a small place here. But I think what's important is, uh, I think you have, um, brought this program to a point where the community is more engaged and where we're going to have a lot more outpouring of arts, uh, in the city and in the region. I mean, obviously, we have a region that's, that's kind of oriented this way. So I think this has been very good, good work on this. I'm looking forward to us, um, going forward and, and, um, I think we're going to have some very great performances and, and things going on in this city in the next few years. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barksdale.
Just a few thoughts and a couple of questions. So I like the modification, simplifying it, reducing the barriers. Uh, for the Power Up for Equal Access, I'm curious about the thoughts or thinking around making that an add-on. Is that in contrast to baking it into the grants? Second question, uh, it's, it's a little bit of a minor one, but like, uh, we're incentivizing for Bellred, but we're going to need art as well along, like, East Trail, for example, is just going to shift those incentives away from East Trail at all. And then the third is, as part of lowering the barriers, um, I know we started some work in the Special Events Committee to reduce barriers to putting on events. And so I'd be curious, and I'll have to do it tonight, but I'd be curious about where that is relative. Like, we're lowering the barriers to get funding. But then there's the other side of actually putting on the events and curious about how these two fit together to reduce barriers overall.
Thank you. I got the first and the last one. I might need a reminder on the second question there. For the equity for equal asset, the Power Up for Equal Access bonus, you can think of it almost as a double dip. So these organizations will get considered on, as same as everyone else, on the impact of their programming, and that impact is probably quite great. And so they get that, that first consideration. And equity and under-service is absolutely something we look at in that. This is then even more. It's above and beyond, and it's meant for capacity building. So really kind of giving us a, a double dip into that community to right some historical wrong. And then the last one I had there, the reducing barriers for special events. We are certainly talking with the special events staff to make sure that we can move in tandem as much as possible there. So it's, conversation's ongoing. And I'm incredibly sorry I missed the second question.
It's the East Rail. So I'll tack one, one more piece on to just the, the special events. So that is, that effort is being led by parks. We are closely coordinating with them, but that is firmly in the parks realm to work on that. Um, and then with regards to East Rail, I think two different funding streams and two different projects. So the, the public art budget, which produces the pieces that are out in the public realm, that will not be impacted by the arts guidelines on, uh, on the content, on the calendar tonight.
Thank you.
So, um, I, um, very much support moving forward with this. Um, I'm really curious of how we can increase funding to the arts. So if that can be part of the plan, if you, there can be any effort put into looking at different avenues for raising revenues to contribute to the arts, I would be very interested in knowing what they are. Also, um, we had a picture of it on the presentation, um, the nails installation. Do you, can you tell me how that happened? Do you know how that came about?
I'm sorry. I know you asked the question. I don't have the story off the top of my head. It is a Sound Transit piece. So it's not in the City of Bellevue's collection, but I know it is a beloved piece. Community members bring it up to me all the time.
Well, it is. And so that makes me wonder, are we doing more public-private partnership installations like that? Because it, that was remarkable, and it has such a good story. I think it was all done remotely during COVID. The design and the fabrication and every, and then they hired people to install it in this area. And, um, it's been so successful. We have lots of opportunities to do more things like that. So I hope that that's part of the plan at looking at how we can do more of that.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, would you?
Yeah.
Let's go down.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, great presentation, um, both Laura and Jesse. And, um, yeah, um, I'll echo some of the comments by my colleagues in terms of, I really like the proposed changes for all the reasons mentioned before, a little more accessible, approachable, understandable. Um, I think that's really going to, uh, pay dividends as it relates to the grant guidelines. I, I too would be supportive of looking at other ways, so increasing funding for the arts. I mean, I believe when the mayor brought that up previously, Bellevue, um, well, let's just say it was one of the few categories we don't, um, rise to the top, um, or, or usually in that top echelon. So, um, I think it would behoove us, and, and I think this community, um, appreciates and wants more art and culture in, 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 in the city. So, uh, would be in favor of that. And, um, as well as more of those public-private partnerships that we can, especially in the Bellred's Spring District, I, I would think that there are plenty of opportunities there, um, with so many new companies and them looking to, um, really be a part of this community. And what better way than to contribute to the arts district or contribute with a, with it, with an arts project? So, um, and thank you for the update on the, on the downtown park installation. That was one of the things I was going to ask about because so many people have heard about that and are anxious to see it. And they especially were hoping that it might get, uh, installed before July 4th. But it doesn't look like that's going to be quite the timeline. So remind me, it was September, uh, late September? So after the Rock and Roll Half Marathon, is that correct?
Yes. So we are going to be very purposeful about being after the Rock and Roll. So that any, it might be about a three-week install. We don't want it impacting.
Okay, great. Well, Mayor, we could make it part of the obstacle course. Thank you so much.
Councilmembers on.
Yes, you know, thank you so much. I think art is just such a part of life and so excited always to know that we're focused on that. And, um, I agree with my colleagues about the streamlined process for eligibility is just so important. I like the fact that we now have this two-year funding cycle baked in where as long as they've met the expectations of the project the first year in that post-report, they automatically are eligible for the second year, is I think the way that I read that. Um, I also like the Power Up for Equal Access bonus. I think that's a really important piece. The Bell Art, Bellred Arts District bonus, I like that as well. I did have a couple of questions and comments. Uh, one is on the Eastside Arts Partnership. It says you had to have been in consecutive, consecutive operations for two years. So I'd like to understand a bit more about that because we may be finding that there are some that had to close their doors and, and, and restart. So you're not going to find a continuous two years. So we might think about, as we come out of COVID, whether that is actually a barrier for organizations right now. Then, and then on the payment at the end of the project, uh, I'm concerned about cash flow. So it does say that you can request a waiver, but it still says that you'd only get 50% of the money once the work has begun. So could we take a look at really a, a need-based, um, approach there? So if they do need more than 50%, I would like us to consider that. So it's not a, um, especially when we're talking about some of the smaller ones. Cause I think that's the project grants where they're, we're only talking about $1,000 to $2,000. And it seems to me that from a risk standpoint for the city, it's very small, but it might be quite significant for the artists. Um, I also wanted to understand, it says 18 years or older. So if you're a 17-year-old, you're not eligible to submit an application? And is there a reason why we wouldn't consider youth to be able to do that? And I agree with the mayor and the deputy about increasing funding, especially as part of the recovery. So Jesse had mentioned earlier that, you know, perhaps when we talk about ARPA funding and how we're going to spend it, maybe that's some bridge funding to help the arts organizations with capacity building. I'm also wondering, since the mayor brought up the, the pencils, that a lot of agencies have art embedded within their capital projects. So whether it's half or 1% for art, I don't believe the city has anything like that, but we should, do we?
No, I don't know. I love the idea.
So we should be looking at, so it would be, right, the projects that are pub, that have public-facing type of facilities, incorporating art within it because it could be, you know, part of our wall. Um, actually, you see that in the Mountain Sound Greenway. There is part of that, the, the abutment and the retaining wall has that art that looks like mountains with the trees. So I think it would be important for us to take a look at how we embed that within our, our projects. And perhaps that's a policy discussion that, um, if my fellow councilmembers have an interest, we could, we could talk about having staff come back. So those are my kind of questions and maybe an ask.
Sure. I can start in on some of those. So the two years in operation, we would go by the 501(c)(3) determination letter. So even if an organization had stepped away from programming during the pandemic or something, they would not have, like, walked away from their 501(c)(3) status. So we're just looking at this as a registered and operating organization. But if they had to take a year because of the pandemic, that is something that we can cur, absolutely accommodate.
Maybe we could make that clearer in the application because when I read it, it wasn't clear to me that if they had done that, that they were still eligible.
It's good to know. We can definitely address that in our guidelines or in our, um, marketing. As for payment to the end of the project, I think that that is a really valid point. Cash flow concerns for many of these organizations are brought up. I am confident that the current program is within the bounds of the law. I don't know if there are restrictions around gift of public funds to give the work ahead of time or to give them funds ahead of time. Currently, if somebody wants 50%, they do have to show that they've done a little bit of work so that we can initiate that payment. That is something staff could explore more, though. As for somebody who's 18 years or older, it is a contracting process. They do sign a contract with us. Um, an example, though, of one of the ways that we work with that is if a school group wanted to work with us, oftentimes their advisor signs the contract, is actually doing the application. So there are, there are certainly instances where folks under 18 are engaging, but they just might not be the ones signing the contract.
So, so again, maybe if we could let them know that? Cause I don't know that if they just looked at the application, it's as obvious.
Okay. And then as for your last point, as to the percent of the arts program, Bellevue does not currently have either a public or private percent for the arts program.
And with regards to all the, the council's comments regarding, uh, the budget, I think all of our arts community would be heartened to hear those comments tonight. Uh, we will certainly look at some options and opportunities and, and present those to Tony Call and the city manager, uh, for future consideration.
Terrific. Thank you. Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, as, uh, as Member Stoke mentioned, art and culture are part of us all, everyone. Uh, so that's what we, we are, and that's how we live, that's how we experience. And that's what makes us so rich that we do have all these, you know, different cultures and arts among us. I know that we don't have enough money to meet all the needs, no way. Especially, I really appreciate you putting a lot of emphasis on different things, building capacity. You know, we have, and there are many people that you cannot find. So I, I'm just curious that, uh, maybe there's a summary somewhere eventually you can tell us. Just, uh, what are the people that may be missed, uh, because we don't have adequate funding? And we need to figure out how and where to focus on doing better, increasing our, our ability to fund it. One of which, of course, is increasing funding levy, right? We, we talk about special levies for the, for transportation, for, uh, parks and, you know, uh, open space. And why not arts, you know, funding? Why not other kind of fund, levy? I think that's important. That reflects the people's need and desire and satisfaction, their wants and needs. And that can, you know, sort of bridge our gap, especially capacity building, you know? Uh, we talk about it, but they are the ones that probably we miss mostly. So I think it's important to do that. And I think that we know that COVID-19 has really affected arts and culture. Many nonprofit organizations were tremendously hurt because the funding really has gone down. And it's not coming back. The, the new study, actually, I, I was mentioning the region made is people who are surveyed. They say, well, we are waiting, you know, we are, we're going to use what are the ways to do it? So it's not going to recover immediately. So this is a concern that we will have. That's the reason why we need to be looking at it. You know, I'm not always just, uh, easy, just, well, just get more money, you know? I'm the kind of, no. We need to get the money to spend the right things, right places. You know, I heard that some of my colleagues mentioned organizations need to have 5%, 2%, 1% for art, you know? If you do an art which doesn't meet the requirement like we are doing, like you guys are doing, levy deliberately, intentionally. If you just say, we got money, just throw it out there, just, you know, do something. That is not going to go, you know, with this council, I believe. You know, we want to know, have you deliberate, intentional plan that you have? Then we know how to go out to the public, say, that's what the money we need, we can spend it and make it happen. So I think that's an important consideration. So I believe partnership, it's important, uh, companies, uh, because they have employees that are part of our community, and that's part of our culture. I said it before, the mayor says, is not, don't, don't say yet, but I'm going to repeat it. It's important that, you know, people with a company, with business, with our community will very much respond and as part of us people. So I think it's important. Okay? So I think it needs to be deliberate, intentional, and makes a difference to our community. So I, we have got Bellred Corridor, we have art district already specified. So it's there. We have provided the planning, we provide the, the, but the most importantly, capacity is important. We've got to build it. Capacity means people, and the capacity means space, place setting. I'm on the special event committee. I appreciate Councilmember, uh, Barksdale mentioned it. You know, I think that's a good, good place. And I know that, having been on the special committee a couple of times, I mean, they're struggling always with people, community asking, where can we do this? Why we can do that? There's no space, right? I mean, there's no capacity to do it. So we got to figure out how to do this. So I think we, we got our mind, we got our soul in the right places, but we got to be sure that we know how to do it. And even if we get the money, we need not to make sure the money is spent to do what your deliberate plan and intention is. So thank you for putting this together, thinking about including these, and important to make sure that we build partnership, get funding adequately to take care of the gap, the, the things that we need to do to improve our community. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So is there a motion?
There is. Mayor, I'm going to approve the guidelines for the 2023 EAP Support Grant and Project Grant, and direct staff to proceed with the implementation.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The next thing is under Other Ordinances, Resolutions, and Motions. Uh, Mr. Miyake?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember, we have two matters under Other Ordinances and Resolutions. The first one is Resolution 10095, which authorizes the city manager or his designate to execute the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding between Washington municipalities and to execute any settlement agreements and or releases with the manufacturers or suppliers of prescription opioids to which this One Washington Memorandum of Understanding between Washington municipalities is applicable. So joining us this evening is Cheryl Zakreski, Assistant City Attorney, for just a brief staff report and to answer any questions the council may have before taking action on this matter. Cheryl?
Good evening, Mayor Robinson and council members. As Mr. Uh, as may, or as Deputy, why am I having a problem tonight? As City Manager Miyake just mentioned, I'm here tonight to introduce for your consideration and action the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding between Washington, Washington municipalities, which counties and cities in the state of Washington are being asked to execute. As you are probably aware, states and local jurisdictions around the country have filed a variety of lawsuits against the manufacturers and distributors of prescription opioids, seeking to recover for the financial damage that those, um, opioids caused in their jurisdictions. The state of Washington and a number of counties and cities in the state of Washington have filed similar lawsuits. Some of these opioid manufacturers and distributors have now, that have, that have been sued by, um, these Washington municipalities, have now expressed an interest in resolving the lawsuits pending against them. Contingent upon their ability them, contingent upon their ability to reach a global resolution that includes most counties and cities in Washington, regardless of whether those counties or cities have in fact filed an actual lawsuit against them. To facilitate this type of global resolution in Washington, the counties and cities are being asked to execute this One Washington Memorandum of Understanding. This memorandum provides a framework that will govern any future settlements with the manufacturers and distributors of prescription opioids. This memorandum sets forth an agreement as to how the settlement funds will be allocated among the counties and the cities, and it provides a requirement that the settlement funds be specifically used to address or abate the opioid epidemic. The city of Bellevue has not filed any lawsuit against any manufacturer or distributor of prescription opioids, but could be the recipient of some of these settlement funds if it signs this MOU and any settlement agreements or releases that arise out of it. Bellevue could then use this settlement money to directly address the effects of the opioid epidemic in its community through various types of abatement activities such as treatment, education, or rehabilitation, or it could choose to partner with some of its neighboring jurisdictions to create a more regional approach with its abatement efforts. The law firms that are negotiating these resolutions with the opioid manufacturers and distributors are asking the counties and cities to decide whether to sign this memorandum as soon as possible because there is a potential lawsuit pending with the three largest opioid distributors in the country, which could result in an initial round of funding being distributed as early as later this month. Given this short timeframe, we are seeking action by the council tonight in the form of a vote on a resolution. City staff recommends that the council adopt Resolution 10095, authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute this memorandum of understanding and any agreements or releases that arise out of it. That's the end of my staff report, and I'm going to turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's start with the motion.
Certainly, Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution 10095, authorizing the city manager or his designate to execute the One Washington Memorandum of Understanding between Washington municipalities and execute any settlement agreements and/or releases with manufacturers or suppliers of prescription opioids to which this One Washington Memorandum of Understanding between Washington municipalities is applicable.
Second.
Any comments or questions? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. Thank you very much. The next resolution, I am actually going to recuse myself. My husband is employed by the King County Housing Authority, and I believe that they assisted in acquisition of this property. I will hand it over to the deputy mayor. I'll give you the gavel even.
City manager, we'd like to proceed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and answering council members. Resolution 10096 authorizes the city manager to enter into an agreement for the Leo at Trailhead Affordable Housing Project in the amount of $32,200 as recommended by the Arts Executive Board. Joining us this evening is Emile King, Assistant Director of Community Development, to provide a very brief staff report and to answer any questions you might have before you take action on this particular matter. Emile?
Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Miyake. I'll provide a very brief report to council before action is taken. So we are seeking action tonight on Resolution 10096, and this is part of the Regional Coalition for Housing 2021 Housing Trust Fund Funding Round, and it pertains specifically to the Leo at Trailhead project in Issaquah. Leo is life enrichment options, and it's for a five-unit facility that's targeted at below 30% AMI individuals out in the city of Issaquah. Bellevue's monetary contribution is $32,200, and that's part of a $250,000 total contribution from all of the art cities combined. Council did discuss this on March 14th of this year and directed staff to bring this back for council action, so that is what we are seeking tonight. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
All right, thank you, Emile. So I'll follow a similar process here. Can I first get a motion, please?
I so move.
Thank you. Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Stokes, any questions or comments? Not seeing any, so with that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it passes. There you go. Thank you, Emile. And I don't believe there's anything else for this evening, so everybody have a great night. Thank you very much.